I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And will the clerk please call roll?
Jerry DiTullio.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any changes to the minutes of June 9th? One change?
No, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of June 9th, 2014.
Second?
Second from Mr. Starker. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero with Councilmember Davis abstaining.
Thank you. We're going to move on to proclamations and ceremonies, starting with citizens award, presented tonight by both myself and council. And I'll go to the podium. We'll start off with some awards to our citizens. The police department has recognized them, but we have called them to council to be honored by their council representative, starting with District One with Mr. Starker and Mr. DiTullio if you'll come forward, as well as citizen Christopher Decknicker.
Do you want to read the proclamation?
Madam Mayor, I'd also call up Amy and Henry and also Mark. Come on up, please.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I'm pleased to present this citizen recognition to Christopher Decknicker. Christopher was awarded the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizen Award and Police Department Ceremonial Challenge Coin at the 2014 Police Academy Ceremony. Christopher's observations, actions, and unselfish behavior resulted in the apprehension of two juveniles who committed first-degree criminal trespass on April 10th, 2014. Without his efforts, the suspects would not have been apprehended and the crime most likely would not have been solved. Thank you very much and congratulations, Christopher.
Chris is my hero tonight, so I'm grateful to have these guys as neighbors. They've been awesome and to have such a great neighborhood. I also like to give thanks for the Wheat Ridge Police Department in acting swiftly. As Chris was on foot, they came around real quick and apprehended the criminals. So I appreciate everybody and certainly appreciate Chris tonight. Thank you.
So I greatly appreciate this award, but I'm not entirely sure if I needed an award for doing something that everyone should have done in the first place, so I appreciate it. I'd do it again.
Notice everybody's taller than I. Now I'd like to call Clint Brown from District Two, as well as Kristy Davis and Zach Urban, who are the district council representatives. No, Clint. Go ahead and read it.
The citizen recognition is for Mr. Clint Brown. Clint was awarded the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizens Award and Police Department Ceremonial Challenge Coin at the 2014 Police Awards Ceremony. Clint called police dispatch and went out of his way to stay with a female citizen lying on the ground covered with mud and snow, wearing no shoes or coat. Medical attention arrived shortly and she was transported to a hospital by ambulance. The actions of Mr. Clint Brown played a part in saving her life. Without his courage, perseverance, and initiative, she could have died. Clint acted in an exemplary manner. For this, we thank him.
Clint, I hope you're watching on TV. One last person, Gina Yerisch. Is Gina here? Gina's here. Come forward, please, Gina. Gina, you've been awarded by the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizen Award and Police Department Ceremony Challenge Coin at the 2014 Police Awards Ceremony. Gina, you contacted Wheat Ridge High School Resource Officer Malloy and advised that she had observed, Gina, I'm sorry, that she had observed a male with a hidden handgun standing across the street from the school parking lot. The suspect was arrested and removed from the area. Due to Gina's courage and initiative to do the right thing and think of safety for all her students, this incident was handled immediately. Her actions and courage help make this a safe community. Thank you, Gina.
I just want to say thank you for this award. I don't think it really required a reward. Everybody, I hope, would have done the same thing. If you see somebody with a weapon, you obviously contact the police, but thank you. I appreciate it.
We do have one other ceremony tonight, which is a presentation from Color Strand Elementary to school resource officers. So let's have those officers come forward, and as well as Genevieve and Jill.
This is actually a presentation to the school resource officers from all of the Wheat Ridge schools. Color Strand happened to make some posters for them, but it is from all Wheat Ridge schools. When, a few months ago, we started the Education Committee for Wheat Ridge, I visited with Jill all of our local schools, and it was interesting that when we talked to the principals, every single one of them brought up the fact of how much they liked the resource officers. Without any prompting or any questions at all, they all said, you know, the police department's great, you know, our resource officers are great, we just have to call them, and they're wonderful. And they received so many compliments from all the principals that we really wanted to recognize them. So Kevin Armstrong is their supervisor, and our officers at our schools here in Wheat Ridge are Barry Malloy, Bobby Dawkins, and Chris Takumi. So we have a thank you from. This is thank you cards from city council because we really appreciate the work you do, and it was so obvious from the schools how much they appreciate all the little things that you do for them, and you are so appreciated and so welcome in the schools, and that's really due to how you perform your job, and we just wanted to say thank you. Color Strand Elementary also put together some posters that we have for you from the kids, and a bunch of kids signed them. And this is Jill Feldman from the Jeffco School Board.
You know, we had a couple of speakers say, why am I getting awarded? This is what we should do when we see something that is wrong. It is because of you folks, the partnership you have with schools, that we're training everyone in the schools, that when something's not right, you tell someone. And police officers are our friends, and these fine examples, we could not do the work we do. The partnership we have with the Wheat Ridge Police Department is really outstanding, and I really thank you so much for all your efforts. And, Genevieve, I thank you. I think we've got a wonderful committee of educators and city people coming together to say, you know what, I'm not going to do your job, but I want to make sure that I can help and I can make a better situation for all the children in Wheat Ridge. And I think that's fabulous, so what a great partner. Thank you all.
Those SROs or student resource officers are very important to the students. Now it's time for citizens' right to speak, and it looks like we do have some here. Okay. Mr. Brown. Oh. Oh. We just, how do I ask that? Was that Clint Brown that just came in? Okay, thank you. Now we do have a citizen who wishes to speak. Do you want to come forward, please?
Good evening. I'm Rachel Haltine, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street, and I feel like I've been up here a lot in the last couple of months, but it's been for so many wonderful reasons. Tonight I'm up here, first of all, to thank the city for an amazing criterium race yesterday. I saw a lot of you there, and it was just an extraordinary event. It had a lot of energy and a lot of excitement. The racers thought it was a fabulous course, and we had a lot of community members come out to support the racers, and I really hope that we get to see that again in 2015 in our community. I'm also here to remind everybody that Wednesday is Bike to Work Day, and because Wheat Ridge is so awesome, we have both a breakfast station that will be hosted by Compass Construction, and it's at roughly 38th and Reed from 6:30 to 9 o'clock on Wednesday morning. And then, because we know how to have a good time, our partners at Right Coast Pizza are partnering with other community partners like Wheat Ridge Cycleery and Empower Cycling for a bike home from work party on the patio with beer specials and giveaways to the first 50 people who come. So that is not just for commuters. If you come on your bike, we don't care where you came from, it is your party. So we hope to see a lot of you there. And then lastly, on the same theme, I'm here tonight just to express my enthusiasm and support for the process of the Pier Street Bike Lines. It's really exciting to see a community get behind, not just funding bike lanes, but the vision to do it right and to build lanes that are for all of our community members. So we really look forward to seeing those come together this summer, fall, whenever that happens to be, and we just really thank you for your vision on that.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Ms. Langworthy?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I would ask that we remove item eight, the resolution amending the fiscal year reflection for the Farmer's 5,000. I think that the amount that you said was really, really close, and I know that I haven't given my money yet, and there's a couple others that haven't. I believe we're going to reach that initial goal we made, which was 2,500, and we might even surpass it. And I think that, you know, I don't want to tie us to an amount where if people want to give more, we end up giving more. And I don't think we need a budget supplemental for it if we're going to hit it on our own.
So you're moving to remove item number?
Eight.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor.
Second.
I have, okay, and Mr. DiTullio?
Madam Mayor, we have a person here from the school that was going to be here to speak and needed to know an amount tonight so they could start ordering their T-shirts. It's Michelle Depecolo, so we don't have to pass the resolution, but she would like to know tonight the amount, so the major sponsorship was 2,500. So we're close, we're at 1,850, so I think we could still have the discussion on item eight, and then she could hear what the amounts were.
I would ask that we, what I would ask is that we kind of make a firm date of it, and I'm more than willing, and I've kind of been holding off because I wanted to see if I needed to give more than I originally intended. You know, I want to make that amount, but I mean, if I need to give more, then I'm more than willing, and I don't know that everybody has responded, and this does come out of our discretionary budget, and so.
Kristy.
Would it be reasonable just to have it by tomorrow or Wednesday? I mean, I can't imagine tonight has to be the drop-dead date of when T-shirts are ordered. I mean, I just think it gives people a chance to provide their discretionary funds without feeling uncomfortable if, you know, to announce on the dais if they're not comfortable how much or what they're going to give. I think it just, it's a process that just might make people feel more comfortable. I'm not certain that the drop-dead date has to be tonight, but if we give it, you know, by Wednesday, is that reasonable? Okay. Is that reasonable of every?
Well, I guess that my concern is, is we heard from everybody else except for two or three elected officials, now we're postponing this when we have a citizen here to speak and hear about it because two people don't want to make a commitment on the dais. I mean, we're at $1,850 right now, our goal was 2,500. So under the elected officials matter, or under the agenda items, say what you're going to give, she'll know, and we can move on. I don't see the point of going through all this. I mean, we could have that decision by now.
I just assume, do my discretionary budget, discretionarily. It's not anything against you, I'm all about supporting you. I just, it's my budget, and I don't go around and tell everybody what I spend it on. It's a very private way for me to help people who are in need, and I do support it. I just, for me, I'm kind of waiting to make sure we hit that, your budget, what we said we were going to give, so I'm kind of hoping to be, you know, if we get to it before I have to do that, then my money just goes over. So.
Okay, are we ready to poll the council? This would be your polling yes to remove this from the agenda tonight, or no to leave it on the agenda. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two with councilmembers Urban and DiTullio voting no.
Thank you. Moving on to item number one, Mr. DiTullio.
I thank you. Item number one is council bill number 05-2014, amendments amendments sections 11-305, 11-416, and 26-204, the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws prohibit the location of medical marijuana-infused products and manufacturers, retail marijuana products and manufacturers in the C1 Zone District, to impose distance requirements between such manufacturers and certain specified land uses, to harmonize other distance requirements for retail marijuana establishments, and repealing the temporary moratorium, and repealing the temporary moratorium on all city action relating to new medical marijuana-infused products and manufacturers, retail marijuana products and applications.
This is a public meeting, a public hearing, so if there's someone to speak, I need to swear them in as well as get an ordinance number. Mr. Dahl?
I'm the staff report, so when you're ready for that.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak, either staff or?
Madam Mayor, I have a letter from a constituent who is not able to be here tonight, so is it appropriate to read it now or another time?
I think it might be more appropriate after we, a little bit later. Okay. All right, do I have someone that's going to speak on this matter, Mr. Dahl?
I'm the only one, I think.
Do I swear in the lawyer?
Most of all.
Most of all. Okay, raise your right hand.
Get that out of the way for my day, I appreciate that.
Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have a rather long issued description, which I don't fault Councilmember DiTullio for not reading all the way through. You have had a number of study sessions on this already, and so I won't spend a lot of time here other than to hit a few points and then ask you for your, any questions that you might have. What this ordinance does really is to incorporate marijuana-infused products manufacturers and retail marijuana products manufacturers into the city's regulatory scheme in a very similar way to the way in which retail marijuana outlets and medical marijuana outlets are already dealt with. And as you know, the main way in which these operations are regulated in the city is by virtue of where they are in terms of zoning districts and also how they are spaced and separated from other retail and medical and marijuana manufacturing establishments. And so the intention here is to make those distance requirements largely uniform, and we can get into the details, but that's what it does. There are a couple of provisions that do the same thing as we've done for retail and medical marijuana, to the extent there's a dual location, you don't have a separation requirement because you're taking those actions at the same location. There's, has been added means to measure the distance because you have spacing requirements, distances from schools, et cetera. There's a way of measuring that. The task of actually figuring out how a pedestrian would walk in the most direct manner is laid on the directed community development, which is the right place for that to be. And that's really very similar to the way in which the distance restrictions on retail liquor establishments are measured from schools. You measure from the exterior boundary of the school property, not the school building, but the property, to the building in which the alcohol is being served, and the same thing is true here. We have changed the table of uses to eliminate medical marijuana-infused products manufacturers and retail marijuana products manufacturers in the C1 Zone District, and now they're only allowed in the IE Zone District, and that again emerged from the study session discussion that council had. That's a kind of a large, without going through every spacing requirement, I think council's fairly familiar with them, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
We'll get to that. First of all, I want to make sure we do get an ordinance number on that.
This will be ordinance number 1550.
Thank you. Now would be time to ask questions of Mr. Dahl. Do you want any questions? Okay.
I think it'd also be good, just for the record, even though you didn't have anyone signing up, I think it'd be well to, I think you asked, I'd ask again if there's anyone in the audience wishing to testify.
Right. We didn't have anyone sign up, but is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, we do not have council questions. Yeah, I'll put that. I'm going to close the public hearing then, and then we can go ahead with a motion and a discussion, in which time you can move forward. Okay? I'm closing the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion for Mr. DiTullio.
Madam Mayor, I really think, maybe you'd check with the city attorney, I think that they're, reading that letter into the record should be under the public hearing.
Sure, I'd forgotten about the letter. I agree, it should be part of the public record.
I think the mayor can just declare the public hearing reopened for the purpose of
taking the letter into evidence.
I'm reopening the public hearing.
This is a letter from Kelly and Nora Brooks. They're not able to be here tonight, but they sent me this letter to read regarding the marijuana ordinances. We are writing to you in support of your response to some of the marijuana regulations that have come before city council recently. As our representative, thank you for demanding that we as a community be as thoughtful and informed as possible when considering the role we want marijuana to play in our city. We're surprised how the passage of Amendment 64 decriminalizing marijuana is somehow being interpreted to suggest that communities create an environment for the commercialization of the industry to flourish. Fortunately, some cities have made it clear that they do not intend to let the industry thrive in their city and are acknowledging the risks to children. As parents of three little children, we are saddened that they and their generation will have to battle yet one more temptation that is now on the road to social acceptance. Are we concerned for our children? Yes. However, we have a strong family with good values, so while society has made it much more difficult for parents, we believe we can still appropriately educate and guide our children. Our concern is equally as great for those less fortunate kids who will grow up in this new culture but without a strong family dynamic and guidance. They are completely at the mercy of a dramatically changing and flourishing marijuana industry that has them square in its sights and very little in place to protect them. City council is embarking on decisions with long-lasting impacts that are completely untested, not just in our community, the state, or the nation, but in the world. Citizens voted on the decriminalization of small amounts of marijuana, not rampant commercialization. We don't understand the rush to unroll the red carpet for this industry. If all the West Metro area cities around us are banning various aspects of the industry, then Wheat Ridge, Edgewater, and Mountain View will become the go-to destination for marijuana in the West Metro area, which doesn't bode well for a community that is eagerly trying to market itself as a great place to come and raise a family. We would like to encourage you and the rest of city council to continue the dialogue regarding what image our city wants to convey to those around us as well as to our children. We realize many decisions have already been made, however, we think it will be gravely important to reassess the impact of those decisions on our community and be willing to make changes to protect our kids. Thank you, Kelly and Nora Brooks.
Thank you, Genevieve. Are there any further comments before I once again close the public meeting? Public meeting is closed. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve council bill number 05-2014 and ordinance amending sections 11-305, 11-416, and 26-204 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to prohibit the location of medical marijuana-infused products manufacturers and retail marijuana products manufacturers in the C1 Zone District, to impose distance requirements between such manufacturers and certain specified land uses, to harmonize other distance requirements for our retail and medical marijuana establishments, and repealing the temporary moratorium on all city action relating to new medical marijuana-infused products manufacturers and retail marijuana products manufacturers applications, on second reading, and that take effect on July 1st, 2014.
May I have a second to the motion? Second. Ms. Davis has seconded the motion, and now can we have discussion?
I will again vote no for absolutely no reason to separate manufacturers of marijuana product that have no retail component whatsoever, and laboratories that will only test and have no retail component whatsoever. The state is pumping money into testing of marijuana potency of edibles right now. There's a lot of money going around. I think one of our labs already has a grant from the state. I see absolutely no reason to impose distance requirements and zoning requirements other than what would normally take place on professional laboratories and manufacturing businesses. The only thing I can see here is pure vindictiveness against marijuana. Now, I understand not everybody believes in marijuana, but the citizens of Colorado voted 60 to 40, 60 percent to 40 percent, to allow marijuana. Would you like to separate every store that sells cigarettes? They're bad, everybody knows they're bad. Not possible. Not possible, people don't want that. How about separating breweries, since we have a big one just down the road? There is no reason whatsoever to do this, except vindictiveness, so I will vote against this. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion, Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to state that I do support this ordinance, but for different reasons, I think that we need to have rules in place that maintain some integrity. And while I don't support marijuana as an overall goal for our state or our community, I really think that if we can find a place for these businesses that have little or no impact on our youth, I think that while the signage is arguably not screaming that bright green that other businesses have, I think that our children are surprisingly more aware than we realize. And I liked what the citizens stated. I mean, I feel like I'm a really good parent, I do my part, but I still know that my daughter spends six hours a day or more in a school where other kids' parents may not do their part, and those, what they say still impacts her, and then she comes home and I have to undo the damage that might be done. So, I will support it, I'm supporting it because of the distance requirements.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to clarify for my colleague in District 3 that I don't believe this ordinance talks to testing laboratory, marijuana testing laboratories of any type, this is really medically-infused products, so testing laboratories are not part of this ordinance.
And Ms. Wooden?
I'm voting yes on the marijuana ordinances this evening, only in order to place greater restrictions on these types of businesses in Wheat Ridge. The effects of Amendment 64 on a small municipality like Wheat Ridge are unknown at this time. How much will this cost the city and police time? What is the potential effect on our youth and the health of our community? What is the potential increase in crime in our area? What is the impact on the city's image? This is uncharted territory, not only for Wheat Ridge, but for the whole state. It is vitally important that we closely follow and monitor the impact of marijuana businesses in Wheat Ridge. I would again encourage council to consider in the future an indefinite moratorium on any future marijuana licenses in Wheat Ridge until we can determine the impact will be, what the impact will be on our city. Because numerous neighboring cities have banned these businesses, there is the potential that it will drive more marijuana to us. It is interesting that the owners of Wheat Ridge marijuana businesses don't even live in Wheat Ridge, they live in a city that has banned the substance, so they can't even do business in their own backyard. Why would cities that are larger and with more money than Wheat Ridge determine that marijuana would be a negative impact on their community financially, socially, and in public health? Regarding public health, why does the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Psychiatric Association, and over 30 other medical associations speak out against expanded marijuana use? And financially, the city of Golden put together a marijuana task force to study the impact on their community. In the section on cost analysis, they state, and I quote, "If alcohol and tobacco are models for legalizing marijuana, then a serious cost analysis needs to be conducted to compare potential revenue to potential cost. In the case of alcohol and tobacco, the damage done by these two drugs show that the tax revenue only covers about 10 to 12 percent. That is called blindside economics and is not good investment for any community," unquote. As this council moves forward with all marijuana issues, it is important that we closely study and consider the impact that this will have on our community and our neighborhoods and the future of Wheat Ridge. There are many points of view on this topic, and it's important that they all be heard and represented on this city council." Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional? Mr. D'Atulio?
Well, obviously, I'll be supporting this ordinance tonight for a few reasons. Before Amendment 64, marijuana was still within our community with young and the old, and it was illegal, we had criminals. Now, voters of Colorado legalized it. The city council of Wheat Ridge started looking at this issue three years ago when I was still mayor, and did a lot of work on it with the city attorney, the city manager's office, other stakeholders, and we came up with a plan, I believe, that addresses the diversity of this community. There's 20 percent of the people probably support this, support marijuana, 110 percent would like no regulations. There's 20 percent of the folks in the community who would say, "No marijuana, ban it for life." I think this ordinance addresses the blend of the 60 percent that are in this community that want some common sense regulations that will work through it. This is not about raising any sales tax revenue, because really, the way the zoning has been laid out, there's only five locations in the city of Wheat Ridge that can handle medical marijuana, retail marijuana, or MIP right now. So, it's five locations, and they all have a store, four or five of them have a location right now, and they're operating, have been operating for one or two years. The problem with banning it now, because that ship's already left the port, is that if we ban them, they will be illegally non-conforming business, and they can stay there as long as they want, as long as they have a new owner within six months if they sell. So, that ship's already left the port, it left two and a half years ago when that previous city council allowed medical marijuana, and so our, the way this is sitting right now, it will only be allowed in the Commercial 1 Zone District, which are basically on the perimeter of the city. There's one 26th and Kipling, one around 44th and Field, and some in the industrial area up north adjacent. So, the MIPS are not even allowed in Commercial, they'll be only in Industrial, and they have some distance requirements. The MIPS means marijuana-infused products. So, I think we have some common sense rules. We regulate other industries, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald mentions about banning or regulating alcohol or cigarettes, well, we do. And I think we're doing the same thing here, alcohol stores and liquor stores not supposed to be within a certain distance of businesses, we're doing the same thing here. And like Mr. Starker had mentioned, the testing facilities are not regulated at all because all they do is test. And the business that was referred to earlier was in Wheat Ridge, testing other products, and they added this to their cafeteria, other testing materials, because people need to know what's going in to these products, so they'll be testing THC contents and the effects. It doesn't really matter where you live, if you open a business in the city of Wheat Ridge, that's not a criteria for approval or denial of a license or zoning application. What matters is if you follow the regulations and the rules. And in this case, previous applicants did follow the rules and regulations of the city of Wheat Ridge, and they're adding a testing facility, which is already there, to test medical marijuana and THC. So, I'll be supporting this tonight, and I would like to see this as a compromise, working together. I'm glad to hear that Ms. Wooden, even though she opposes this, is looking at the bigger picture, and I would hope that all of us look at that and this go 8-0, because this is a win-win for the entire community, nobody's getting 100 percent of the loaf on either side of the fence.
Any additional comments or questions? Are you ready to pull the council?
Madam Mayor, I don't usually ask this, but since this is a sensitive topic, I wanted to just ask the council folks if any of you would like me to specifically put a summary of your remarks on this into the minutes. Or do you want it to say, "Discussion followed"? But if there's anyone that specifically wants me to put what they said about this, I would be glad to do that. So, who wants?
Counsel, is that something you can handle or wish you were? Mr. Pond?
Personally, I'd just prefer that the minutes get published in the normal fashion, and obviously, the video recording of the, of this meeting is available as usual.
Any other comments on that? It seems like an honorable way of doing it.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you?
I'm okay with the summary, but...
Well, no, I mean...
I think what we're asking, they're looking for is a summary of the comments via the recording of the minutes, so that everything is accurate as it was...
That I could say a sentence that Mr. Fitzgerald expressed in one sentence, and you in one sentence, and you in one, but say what side you were on, and what sort of reason why, or do you...
I would recommend that we just do the minutes like we normally do. I, you know, I think that any topic at any time could be especially important to any one person or two people, but if we start kind of deciding, oh, this is, you know, I think it's available for video, on tape, and people can refer to it if they want the individual discussions, but I don't know that we need to start deciphering, this is an important issue, let's delineate the minutes. I think we either delineate all minutes, or we do minutes like we normally do.
Any other words of guidance? Okay, thank you.
Can we pull the council now on this, on item number one? All in favor, I'm sorry, just go ahead and vote.
Did you vote? Did you all vote? Is that right?
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Fitzgerald voting no.
Okay, can we move on to item number two, and that would be Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number two. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is Council Bill Number 06, 2014, and ordinance amending Chapters 26 and 11 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by the adoption of a new Section 26-639 concerning marijuana and amending Paragraph 11-321D8 concerning applications for primary caregivers. Under existing state constitutional provisions, individuals may cultivate and possess up to six marijuana plants, with three or fewer being mature flowering plants that are producing usable form of marijuana, for their own consumption and use. Medical marijuana patients and their primary caregivers may possess even more than six plants at a time to meet a demonstrated medical need. Existing city code does not regulate the manner in which marijuana may be cultivated and used by individuals in residential zone districts. The city council discussed this issue at its May 19, 2014, study session. Finding that the unregulated cultivation and processing of marijuana in residential settings may pose significant health, safety, and welfare risks, such as an increased risk of fire, mold, odor, fumes, theft, or burglary, and access to marijuana by children, the city council directed staff to present this ordinance adopting residential cultivation and processing restrictions. This ordinance adopts restrictions on marijuana cultivation, drying, processing, and manufacturing in residential dwellings.
You're done.[1348.01][1348.01](Laughter) All right, we need two things. I need to open, this is eight, once again, a, on second reading, so I need to open a public meeting, and I also need an ordinance number, can we start with the ordinance number on this one?
This will be ordinance number 1551.
Thank you, and I'm going to open a public meeting, and do I have either a staff report or a public hearing commentary?
I'm the staff report.
You're it again.
Yep.
All right. If I may swear you in, do you swear to affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it?
I do.
Thank you.
Counsel, you've got a pretty good description of the issue from Councilmember Starker. As is said in the, both the description and the materials you have, we have two constitutional amendments, one permitting the cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes, and the other simply the cultivation of marijuana for personal use. The restrictions are largely the same in terms of the number of plants, et cetera. As is pointed out in the staff report, this is not an area that's very highly regulated by the state. Retail marijuana sales is, there's a whole new division, as you know, looking at that, at the state level, but not this personal consumption, either on the recreational side or on the medical side. And so many communities are doing what is suggested here, to talk about what are the restrictions on residential grows. And you see those restrictions, both in the ordinance and at the top of page two of the staff report, there's a bullet list that I won't go through, but it's the materials that, and the issues that you discussed in study session, limiting the grows to a certain percentage of the residents, and basically no outside effects from the sense of visible impact, odor, et cetera. Critically, the restrictions on the use of compressed gas that I know came up in one of the council discussions. In any event, these are absolutely legitimate restrictions that can be placed on this constitutional right, it's really a, instead of a constitutional right so much as an exception from or a defense to criminal prosecution, people often forget that, that the Constitution wasn't really as broadly amended as was, has been suggested, but nevertheless, these are legal activities under state law, and it's important, I think, for the city to be in the business of protecting residential user, residential neighborhoods from the potential effects, just like it would worry about the effects of a bad home occupation. It's really in the same kind of regulatory scheme that we're in right now, in terms of the changes that are proposed here. And critically, I think it's important that the ordinance emphasizes that you can't do these personal grows in non-residential structures, and that addresses the idea of, well, a whole bunch of people, to get together with their six people with their own personal grows, six times six, that's 36, pretty soon you have a grow operation in a warehouse somewhere, and that's precluded, and you can only do this in a residential structure under these restrictions. I'd be happy to answer questions, I know that you've, again, seen this material in your study session.
Are there questions of council of Mr. Dahl? Mr. D'Atulio?
Either Mr. Dahl or the police chief, can you explain, i.e., for the public, how this is going to affect illegal hash oil production, which we've seen on, in the news about homes producing hash oil? What are we banning here in the use of that? I think it was the butane type of facilities, just so the neighbors and the citizens know that we're trying to regulate this?
Let me begin by saying that the ordinance prohibits the use of compressed flammable gas as a solvent in the extraction of THC or other cannabinoids, and that's what you have seen on the news, people using compressed natural gas to really become their own manufacturer in a sense, and reduce this, just like you'd reduce crude oil down to gasoline, and that's a, you know, it's a dangerous activity, and that's prohibited, so the goal here would be to eliminate that, that kind of activity, and so instead, people were just growing plants in pots, and drying it out, and using it in the more traditional way, if, like I can say, call it that. And Chief, do you have anything to add?
I think you summed it up pretty well, Mr. Dahl. It's really the use of butane as a compressed gas to extract the oil out of the cannabis, it's a very flammable, highly toxic process, and has resulted in a number, you know, of incidences throughout Colorado and the Denver metro area in terms of house explosions. This would prohibit folks from doing it, doesn't necessarily mean that they won't, but it gives us a tool in which we can, we can charge as well as some existing CRS, Colorado revised statutes that exist out there, so...
What would the penalty be if they were caught?
Well, if it's a code violation, that goes into municipal court, and the maximum fine is $1,000 and a year in jail. That's the fine and penalty authority of the municipal court judge. If it's a misdemeanor under the CRS, a misdemeanor, is that what it is?
Mr. Dahl's correct, and what will determine what the actual penalty will be is what the circumstances of the incident are. It might be feasible in some circumstances to be able to prove enough intent to charge an arson charge, which would be a felony, and carry a more harsh, stiffer penalty, and time in prison or jail. That doesn't always happen, you don't always have the probable cause to make that particular arrest, so this gives the, you know, the city a fallback position to take if more serious charges aren't relevant.
Thank you.
Any additional questions of Mr. Dahl? Are there any, are any of the public here wish to speak on this, or any letters to be read into the record? Yes, Ms.?
I have one small question. I know it says, "The use cannot generate traffic noise, vibration, glare," it's, fumes and odors that give me the greatest concern, and it isn't, and it is a direct smell of the marijuana, but having recently worked through someone who's done this, it's not just the marijuana plant itself, it's the level of fertilizers they must use on that, and so that creates its own separate kind of odor, but it's, you know, generally directly, I mean, most people don't use enough fertilizer in their house to make a smell carry through walls. Would that fall in that same thing if it has to do with the plants?
Sure. Let's look at the, you know, what the language really says is, it can't generate any of these effects, and there's, you know, noise, vibration, et cetera, fumes, beyond what normally occurs in any residential zone district. And so it's really, and I realize there's some subjectivity here, you can't avoid some subjectivity in any regulation, right? Sometimes you can mean... Sometimes you can be more objective, but, but here it's, you do the best you can by saying that, I believe, and that extends to, to, to any smells that would be out of the ordinary for a residential district. So it would not just be the smell of the marijuana itself, it could be any, any other odor that's being generated as a result of that activity that's, that's beyond the, the normal background for a residential area.
Thank you, because I'd say that the fertilizer can actually be more of a toxic smell and try to, you know, to cope with that than just the plants themselves. Thank you.
Okay, I believe I'm ready, I'm ready to close the public meeting and ask for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 06 dash two thousand fourteen, an ordinance amending chapters twenty-six and eleven of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by the addition of a new section twenty-six dash six thirty-nine concerning marijuana and amending paragraph eleven dash three twenty-one B eight concerning applications for primary caregiver licenses on second reading, and that it take effect upon final adoption and signature of the mayor.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Starker, and thank you, Mr. Zutulio. We have a second to the motion. Is there any discussion further? Then let's go ahead and pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Moving on to item three, Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 08 dash twenty-fourteen, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the keeping of dwarf goats. At issue, some homeowners have recently raised questions about the permissibility of dwarf goats on residential properties in the city. The city's large animal regulation, section twenty-six dash six oh five, currently regulates full-size goats, but no, no distinction is made for dwarf goats, which are considerably smaller. The city's small animal, animal regulation, section twenty-six dash six oh six, reference rabbits, chinchillas, and various fowl and poultry, but nothing similar to a goat. A property owner located at thirty-four ninety-five Ames Street in eastern Wheat Ridge has expressed an interest in keeping dwarf goats on her property. Dwarf goats are not specifically referenced in any section of the municipal code. Based on limited research referred to the attached handout, it appears dwarf goats are generally between forty to sixty pounds, so substantially smaller than a regular goat, which averages approximately one hundred and fifty pounds. They have become increasingly popular both as pets and as source of dairy and dairy-related products. Based on the above-described small and large animal code sections, it has been, been determined that dwarf goats are most similar to goats and therefore subject to the city's large animal regulations. The property in question is not of sufficient size to meet the threshold of nine thousand square feet of open lot area that is required to keep an at-large animal. This determination has caused the property owner to request that the city consider code amendments to allow the keeping of dwarf goats in more circumstances than currently allowed under large animal regulations. Is a motion in order?
Yes, since this is first reading.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 08 dash twenty-fourteen, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the keeping of dwarf goats on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM in City Council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Second. We got a second. Thank you, Mr. Zutulio. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Moving on to item number four, we have Mr. Urban reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Number Thirty-six dash two thousand fourteen, resolution approving Hopper Hollow, excuse me, Hopper Hollow Park as the name of the new park located at Forty-Fourth and Kendall Street. A new neighborhood park is currently under construction at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall Street and is scheduled for completion in the fall of two thousand fourteen. Naming proposals for the park were solicited from the community by Parks and Rec Commission. The process for the naming of Parks, Parks and Recreation Department facilities is defined in the policy and procedures for naming Parks and Recreation Department parks and facilities. The policy states that the Parks and Recreation Commission, a commission of eight citizen volunteers appointed by the City Council, recommends a park name to the City Council based on the policy criteria. The Parks and Recreation Commission is recommending the name Hopper Hollow Park for the new park located at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall Street. The commissioner, the commission would like to recognize and thank Susie Seeds for submitting this proposal.
Do we have any report on this? Looks like we do.
I don't have anything to add, but we do have a procedural, a request for a procedural amendment to the motion, and, and Jerry, Mr. Dahl has the wording for that amendment.
Council, the, the city also has a park naming policy, that's separate documents of policy approved by the council that lists all of the parks in the city and has their names, and, and this is a new park, and so it's not on that list. So I'd ask Councilmember Urban, when you, if you would not mind, when you make the motion to add to the tail end of the motion and approve an amendment to the city's park naming policy accordingly. And if we do that, then Hopper Hollow Park will show up on that policy, and we won't have to bring a separate action item to you at a later time.
So this will be a part of, of the motion?
That's right.
That statement?
And, and amending the city's park naming policy accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I believe we're ready for that motion? No?
I have a question. The, is it appropriate to ask questions?
Oh, we can do that under discussion, or, is this a question regarding the policy? Okay, please.
The policy states that there are specific criteria, categories under which the names fall under. Which category does this name fall under? So it says it must be an event, DC's person, a living person, a donor, a group of donors, or a place name, so is this a place name?
It is a place name. It represents the character of the park, as there are grasshoppers and ladybugs.
Okay.
All right.
I move to approve Resolution Number Thirty-six dash two thousand fourteen, a resolution approving Hopper Hollow Park as the name for the new park at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall Street, and to also approve an amendment to the city park naming policy as considered.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Woodin? Did you second? Yes. Motion's been made and seconded, is it, do we have some discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Langworthy?
I just want to make a comment that while we, we're picking Hopper Hollow, which I think is a fantastic name, that it's, it's, it's pretty impressive that several small children even kind of contributed to this and, and had suggestions, and while I'm not really sure that we want a rocket ship Spider-Man park, I think that Sayaka Robinson, at three years old, is already starting their contribution to our community in Super Duper Park by, by making their opinions known even at three, so hopefully they'll stay in Wheat Ridge and continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Please pull the council on this item.
Motion carries eight zero.
And moving on to item five, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. So this ties in with our last motion. This is a motion to approve payment to Kendra Fleishman in the amount of twenty-nine thousand for the purchase of Truth, a bronze sculpture for the new park at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall. The design and master plan for the new neighborhood park located at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall includes a public art project. The process for selecting public art is defined in the public art management plan. Per this process, a bronze sculpture entitled Truth, do we have that on the, we don't have it on overhead or anything? So if I held it up, would people see it? Maybe they can do a close-up, you know? So here's, here's the sculpture itself, so was selected by an appointed committee for recommendation to the Cultural Commission and approval of purchase by the City Council. I know that there's members here that were a part of that process. Did you all have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, let's, let's do it in the order of staff.
Okay, all right, so we'll do it in order. I'm out of, I'm out of order. So, okay, so is a motion in order?
First, let's have, there's any questions of staff?
Okay.
Anything like that? Staff, any reports on it? Nope? Can we move to public comment, and then we'll go and move to a motion?
Okay.
Diane, I see you're signed up for public comment. This is your, this is your chance.
Hi, I'm Diane Robb, seven zero zero three West Thirty-Fifth Avenue. It is my goal to speak with you this evening to encourage you to accept the recommendation of the Cultural Commission for the sculpture that has been chosen for the new park. The Cultural Commission was given the budget to work within, and we followed the policies and procedures of the public art management plan, which spells out specifically the process and criteria in acquiring public art for this city. The selection committee was led by a professional arts consultant, including a member of the Cultural Commission, community members, arts professionals, a site agency representative, and Wheat Ridge Department personnel that would be directly impacted by this decision. It was felt that a direct purchase rather than a commission would be the most timely and cost-effective strategy for this project. We started out by sending a request for images to more than thirty regional artists and announced it also through various artists' networks and public art programs in the region. We received a response from thirty-seven artists that offered us eighty sculptures that were currently available for direct purchase. The committee met and reviewed all the images submitted. Lively discussion followed regarding the criteria, along with numerous miscellaneous comments and opinions. After a couple rounds of viewing and numerous votes, we finally narrowed our choice down to three sculptures for further consideration. We visited the sculptor's studios to personally assure that the actual sculpture was what was represented in the images submitted, and also we wanted to examine the sculptures themselves for quality and condition. The third and final meeting was convened to identify the specific artwork to purchase. After reviewing the criteria again and discussion about the studio visits, the selection committee voted unanimously to recommend the purchase of the sculpture Truth by Kendra Fleishman. This specific bronze sculpture is number five of an edition of five and is the only one in Colorado. This recommendation from the selection committee was then presented to the Cultural Commission, and the Cultural Commission voted to recommend to City Council this sculpture as it fulfills all the criteria in the public art management plan. Also, it's a dynamic, wonderful, absolutely beautiful, beautiful sculpture that will be a true gem in the city's public art collection that we can all be very proud of.
Thank you, Diane. I, I believe Diane likes the sculpture. Diane, at one time I believe you said that open space funds helped with the purchase of it?
Yes, it's the open space funds that's purchasing it, it's not the public art funds of the city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Any questions of Diane? Oh, yes, Ms. Woodin?
It's just a comment, but could you describe a little bit how we talked about putting it up on a pedestal?
Yes, the sculpture itself is about six feet tall, and we determined that we would like it to be higher for a number of reasons. One is just so when people are driving by, it would be easier to see, it would make a greater impact up on the park, make, make a greater impact on public art in the city. We contacted the artist Kendra Fleishman and spoke with her about would she work in conjunction with us in, in designing a base that would lift it up an additional four feet. When we were at the studio, we looked at the sculpture and we actually even got down on the ground and looked up at it, because we wanted to see what, what would it look like from down here if it's up an additional four feet? All of a sudden then we have a sculpture that's up at ten feet. Also, at that height, there, there is less chance for people to hang on it. And so the sculptor is very excited and willing to work with us in determining just what that base is going to look like to raise it up. And again, it's open, open park funds and not the city Wheat Ridge Public Art Funds that is paying for this.
Question right here?
I have a quick question. Do we know where in, within the park this piece is gonna be sitting?
Right now, in the design, it will be at the entryway on Forty-Fourth.
Any other questions?
I have one more, sorry. I'm reading this, and I, I'm, I'm making some, some educated guess, but the Visual Artists Rights Act, is that just to ensure that she's giving up the rights to the sculpture and the overall design of it as it relates to our piece and our park? Is that what that is?
What, what that intends to do is that we can use the images of her, she still retains the right to that design.
Okay, thank you.
But we can use that image within the city of Wheat Ridge.
So if we take pictures of it and put in our connections and things like that, we have the right to do that?
Yes, we have the right to do that.
But she has the right to make more of it if she wants to?
Actually, no.
Oh.
Because she has stated that it was an edition of five, it's a bronze made from a mold, so this was edition number five. She has assured us that the mold has since been destroyed.
Okay, thank you.
So there will not be any more of that design given.
Thank you.
One question.
Mr. Urban with a question?
Do we have any indication of where those other five pieces are installed, or?
You know, I, I recall briefly there were a couple in California, but I don't, I don't know. But there, but this is the only one that is in Colorado.
There's no further questions? Please give us a motion?
Okay. Thank you for your thorough and thoughtful work on this. It, it sounded like it was kind of fun.
It was a fun, fun process.
So I move to approve payment to Kendra Fleishman in the amount of twenty-nine thousand for the purchase of Truth, a bronze sculpture for the new park at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Kendall Street.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zutulio. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, and let's move on to item number six, Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to introduce item number six. This is Resolution Number Thirty-seven dash two thousand fourteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen capital investment program budget to reflect an approval of a supplemental budget appropriation, the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the Pierce Streak Street bicycle facilities improvements. At the June second, two thousand fourteen study session, the City Council discussed proposed alternatives for the installation of bicycle facilities on Pierce Street between Twenty-Sixth Avenue and Forty-Eighth Avenue. After discussion, council elected to install dedicated bicycle lanes on both sides of Pierce Street between Twenty-Sixth Avenue and Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and shared lanes, parking, and a bicycle on both sides between Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Forty-Fourth Avenue. Pierce Street between Forty-Fourth Avenue and Forty-Eighth Avenue will be marked as a shared travel use by the installation of sharrows, shared traffic pavement markings. Additional wayfinding signage and pavement markings, as appropriate, will also be installed on Forty-Eighth Avenue between Pierce and Oda Streets to direct cyclists to the Clear Creek Trail. The two thousand fourteen capital investment program budget initially dedicated sixty-three thousand dollars toward the Pierce Street improvements as part of the two thousand fourteen budget process. That amount was based on an estimated cost for minimal improvements, or essentially sharrows for the entire length of Pierce Street, along with supplemental signage. Over the past month, staff attained bid unit prices- Over the past month, staff attained bid unit prices for the striping and signage work and as a result has been able, have been able to calculate a refined estimate for the improved improvement cost based on the direction received from council on June second. Based on the estimated quantities and unit prices, staff is confident that the additional amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars will be adequate to fund the improvements.
Confident. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Second.
Oh, I didn't, we didn't call for the motion yet.
I've quite gotten the motion yet.
That was not a motion. Do we don't have a staff report?
Unless there's any questions.
Alright, so then I, can we have a motion?
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
It's already seconded.
Okay.
Did you make the motion?
No.
No, he was, she asked.
Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to move Resolution Number Thirty-Seven Dash Two Thousand Fourteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen capital investment program budget to reflect approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the Pierce Street Bicycle Facilities improvements.
Second.
I believe a second is, Mr. Giutulio has given us a second.
And a quick question?
Any?
One quick question.
Discussion, please?
Question.
A question?
Just a question. Mr. Brink is, in the package it mentioned that they'd be dedicated bike lanes from Twenty-S sixth to Thirty-Eighth, but isn't there also going to be some on-street parking that's going to remain also? Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
In certain locations?
Yeah, for a good chunk, even a majority of that stretch, there will be parking remaining on at least one side and some places both sides.
Okay, and then Thirty-Eighth Avenue North, just for the public's right to know, is will be shared bike lanes and parking all the way from Thirty-Eighth to Forty-Fourth? Both sides?
Pierce Street from Thirty-Eighth down to Forty-Fourth, correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion? Nope? Vote? Please pull the console.
Motion carries eight zero.
And item number seven, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please to introduce motion to award ITB dash fourteen dash thirteen, two thousand fourteen overlay project base bid and bid alternates one, four, and five to Martin Marietta Materials Westminster, Colorado in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents with a contingency amount of fifty thousand and authorization for the Director of Public Works to issue change orders up to a total contract and contingency amount of one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents. At issue, the two thousand fourteen street resurfacing project was developed to provide needed maintenance treatments to a number of selected streets by priority in accordance with the citywide maintenance plan. The program is intended to extend the life of pavement on streets that are structurally sound. The project also includes concrete and handicap ramp replacements on streets being resurfaced, striping maintenance of high-volume streets throughout the city by priority, and spot pavement patching citywide. This project is the second and last of two preventative maintenance projects that the city will implement this year. This project also includes three small-scale separate projects which were incorporated into the project bid as bid alternates to leverage more competitive and lower prices for those particular projects identified further in this report, and I'm sure we'll have a staff report that'll explain those.
Are we ready? Do we have a staff report?
Yes, included in the bid package, we have a base bid which is nearly a million dollars for the bituminous overlays, and then we also threw in alternate bid prices for a few smaller projects that we like to package in with the larger project because we get a lot better competitive prices with that. Number one is a drainage improvement from the Cambridge Park Homeowners Association, a drainage ditch that runs between that and the rec center over to Lena Gulch. Some improvements to that to fortify the ditch a little better and make maintenance a little easier. That particular improvement is going to be paid for from the, by the homeowners association with the engineering and the construction inspection being provided by the city. We had numbers two and three alternate bids were for some additional striping and paving work that we chose not to include in the bid package just because it took us over the budget of what we had for the overlays. These were some additional overlay work that we wanted to get prices for to see if they would fit in with the budget, and it did not. Bid alternate number four is the Pierce Street Bicycle Improvements that additional appropriation was just approved previously, the prices for that. And then bid alternate number five is some prices for speed humps in anticipation of the possible work for the neighborhood traffic management program that was just approved. We're going through the process of traffic calming requests with the neighborhoods, and in the event we need to put up some speed humps, we've got some prices for that now. So that includes, concludes our bid package here.
Question? Mr. Pond?
So, on that last topic, number, bid alt number five, which I see in the bid tab as fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents, can you just elaborate a little bit on that? Is that a, is that a bucket of money that's intending to cover several speed bumps or speed humps, or is it, is it the price per bump?
Yeah, that was broken down like a price per speed hump. I believe they were around a few thousand dollars apiece, and then we threw up, threw in some extra items for signage, striping, those kinds of things too.
So this, this covers, depending on applications?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Brinker, Mr. Goff, I may be a little confused. On the last item we did, we had previously appropriated sixty-three thousand dollars for the Pierce Bike Streak Lanes, and we just approved another thirty-seven thousand for them. Are we approving now another, another sum of money for that work? Looks to me like we're sort of doubling up on that allocation, if you will.
No, all we, all we had available in the budget for, for all these projects, including the Pierce Street, we just had the sixty-three allocated, so we need the additional thirty-seven to take care of the total estimated price of, what was it, close to a hundred?
Yeah.
Hundred thousand?
Right. But now we're, we're approving bid alternate number four, which includes more money to do that work?
This is approving the award of the contract, so it's not approving additional funds. You had to first approve the additional funds so that we could approve this contract in the full amount, which includes the sixty-three that was originally budget plus the additional thirty-seven that you just approved.
Okay, so this is really just a, just a contract letting award on funds that have already been appropriated?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Additional questions? Mr. Urban?
At one point in the public meetings for the Pierce Street Bike Lanes, it was mentioned by staff that this project had already gone out to bid, and it's somewhat concerning to me that we put up, I understand the expedience of it, but when citizens come to a public meeting, they say, "What do you think about this project that we've already sent out to bid?" It sort of puts a damper on their feeling that they have any sort of impact on what may or may not happen. They may not have a full understanding of the complexity behind wanting to put this as a bid alternative, but my question goes back to a comment I made at the last meeting is that, how is it appropriate that we can include an element into an RFP or a request for bids from contractors where those monies haven't even been appropriated by City Council? Is that being told to the bidders that not all of this has necessarily been approved yet, and you may be bidding on something that hasn't, doesn't have any money behind it, or how does that get flushed out?
Yeah, this is, this is a typical process procedure that we use primarily in capital improvement projects, large ones. We typically add bid alternates just to get pricing and to determine if they can fit within the budget or not, and then if they don't, they're well aware that the bid alternates may not be approved. It's only if they provide reasonable pricing that we can fit into the budget. The reason we put the bid alternate for the Pierce Street was just to get a better idea of cost for council so we could make a consideration decision on that project. Thankfully, the price came in, I think, a reasonable amount that we were able to fit it into the budget with the additional appropriation.
Okay, I just, I still have a problem with the hosting public meetings and telling people, "Oh, this has already gone out to bid," and it's not, there's then for the citizens to be able to say, "Well, then what's my role here if you guys have already sent this out to bid and it's already down the tracks? Why are you..." It just sort of seems to put the people that come to a public meeting like that at sort of a loss where how am I going to have any say in this part if this has already gone out to bid?
I think citizens had a lot to say. I mean, I think the final design was based on citizen comment and council comment. It only went out to bid to get pricing. Council did not have to approve the project, so there, it wasn't a predetermined thing. It was put out to bid to get pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? If not, then I need a motion.
Thank you. I move to award ITB dash fourteen dash thirteen, two thousand fourteen overlay project base bid and bid alternates one, four, and five to Martin Marietta Materials Westminster, Colorado in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents with a contingency amount of fifty thousand and authorization for the Director of Public Works to issue change orders up to a total contract and contingency amount of one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Starker has seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion? Please pull the console. That concludes our, our meeting tonight as far as our agenda. Let's move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few calendar reminders and updates for council and the public. Just as a reminder, we have a special study session this Wednesday, June twenty-fifth at six-thirty, and its topic is, it's an update from our consultants that we've hired C. Walden Handling on a community outreach initiative. It'll be a discussion of phone poll results that were conducted last week. And then also a reminder, we have district council meetings, June thirtieth, both here at the Recreation Center, or I'm sorry, here at City Hall District One and Two will meet at six-thirty, and then at the Recreation Center, I believe, six-thirty the same time? Have we decided that? District Three and Four will be meeting at the Recreation Center. And then July seventh, study session, we have canceled. So just some updates on that.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Elected officials' matters. City Clerk?
I was, maybe we have, last time I talked about, to vote in the primary, they can read a ballot, twenty-four hour ballot drop off box that is in the entrance line at City Hall. They don't have a ballot and they think they should, and they probably still want to, and then, 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 and we lost within the last year, lifelong learning scholarship fund that's sponsored by the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation and Family Tree. So I encourage everyone to go. It sounds like we've got a little bike route, so that's nice as well. So please attend that.
My mic wasn't on either, so hopefully everyone heard that. I'm kind of loud. The other thing I'd like to do, as being kind of a numbers person sometimes, is really celebrate the council members and the donation that we are giving to the Wheat Ridge Farmers Five Thousand from a numbers perspective. One of the numbers, just for fun, that I want to throw out is that as an alumni, this actually started a little bit before I became an alumni to the, or started the school. But from a numbers perspective, we, if our, if we meet our kind of benchmark goal, we will have increased the donation from the previous year by a hundred and fifty percent, which I think is something to celebrate upon. And based off of the letter from their netted revenues, that our donation would also be about ten percent of the revenues that they've netted in the previous year. So I think it's a donation that needs to be celebrated and everyone, you know, it's great that we were able to pull it from our funds, our outreach funds, and not have to do an appropriation to our budget. So I just want to celebrate that as well because we did it together as a group without having to make a budget appropriation. And that's all.
First of all, I called him Ken Siles. It's Ken Siler. I read that R as an S. I apologize to the Siler family. And Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Just want to invite everybody to come out to the St. Peter and Paul Parish Festival this weekend. It's a community event, and we encourage all to attend. It'll be a great time with live music and local food, and a great time just to come out and hang out and great summer night. So it'll be going on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to express my thanks and really, way to go for a great job to the Criterion race yesterday. I was down there, and there was a lot of enthusiasm down there, a lot of happy people, a lot of great kids, and obviously a lot of bicyclists, and I think it was a great event for our city, and I really appreciate the folks at Twenty Twenty and all of the other agencies and the public employees and agencies that helped put that on. It was a great success, and I hope that's the, I know it's not the first, but I hope it's the rejuvenation of an annual event that I know will grow and be of great pride in our city. We have also, there was a public safety incident last week over at around Twenty-ninth and Chase, and in response to that, and in looking out to how we might inform our citizens about public safety issues, there will be a meeting this Thursday, June the twenty-sixth at six thirty p.m. at Yule Firehouse, just north of Thirty-second and DePew, correct? I think that's right. We've got the flyers here, to put on by the Wheat Ridge Police Department to talk about public safety issues. So if you would like to stay informed about those, I would certainly ask that you join us at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tuttulio.
Thank you. I wanted to echo what Ms. Davis had mentioned about Wheat Ridge High School. We're at around eighteen fifty right now with elected outreach donations, and I was hoping that the last remaining few elected officials, if you could please contact Janice Smothers tomorrow morning, because I'm working with the, with that particular person that was here tonight to help them as a city liaison to get the funding figured out so they can work on their sponsorship t-shirts and everything else. And our goal, I believe, was twenty-five hundred total, and that would be, like you said, ten percent of what they raised last year. So if you really wouldn't mind contacting Janice tomorrow morning, we're about six hundred and fifty dollars short. And then also, I wanted to send my condolences to Ken Siler, his family, Chris Siler, his wife, and family. I served with Ken Siler on City Council when he was on City Council. He was an integral part of Dr. Cog at the time, and he's also an integral part of when we had the Rec Center passed back in the early two thousands. And then, as Mr. Starker mentioned, we're having this community meeting about the incident on Twenty-ninth and Chase, plus Stranger Danger. We passed out these flyers to the neighborhood in District One over the weekend, so we tried to get the areas between Twenty-ninth and Thirty-second shared and eaten. So they'll be passed out. And let's see. Also, here's another flyer for our council. I guess if you're elected in District One, you have to keep on your toes. This is going to be sort of a mini Fourth of July parade, starting at ten thirty on July fourth. It's sponsored by some neighbors in District One, and of course, Mr. Starker and I are helping with the permit fees, and I'm working with the staging. But anyway, this is going to be on Thirty-fifth Avenue between Marshall and Fenton. We're going to end at the park, and we're going to have a barbecue potluck, and we're going to have mainly for children with bicycles, flags. We have a few classic cars, and the little one-half fire engine's going to be there from the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. It's a real small one that the kids like, and I'll have my '64 Corvette in there, a '57 Chevy. So it's going to be a fun afternoon, be a quick parade. We've got the permit already approved by the city. Staff went through it. So please join us if you want. It starts at ten thirty. We're going to stage over at the Active Adult Center and then go east to Panorama Park, and that's where we'll have people getting the park for us. And also, I wanted to thank the folks that designed this flyer. This was Airline and Debbie Sarkoni, and Airline doesn't want her last name mentioned, so I won't mention that. But there's some activists in District One. So I guess this is the last meeting we'll have before July four, so I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Remind everybody that there's no fireworks are allowed in the city of Wheat Ridge. Please take advantage of one of the locations that are in the area, that are the big open areas where they have fireworks for everybody. Happy Fourth of July.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I don't have much, but I will, for a second, linger on the success of us moving forward on the bike improvements to Pierce. We've spent a lot of time, and I guess I say we, in a broad sense, because obviously staff, other commissions, other councils have thought long and hard about how to improve bicycle facilities in our community, and I think this is really a watershed for us, and happens to coincide with a lot of the other fantastic events and activities that are happening in the community as it relates to bicycle, pedestrian, and those infrastructures that support that part of our growing community. So I just, I want to make sure everyone thinks a little bit about just how much work has been into that. And really, the only problem was that I used to live on Pierce, so this is five years, five years too late. But I'm happy for District One, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
So you noticed that we waited until you moved. I just want to say how happy I am that we're moving forward with bikes, also the path, not only the path, but the Criterion. And our whole thinking is changing to biking and walking. That's all.
Thank you. I, you know, it's summertime, so events tend to be a little slower as people like to vacation. So with that in mind, and having just heard from, break from Bella a couple weeks ago, just remember that there's kids out, and they're quick, and they don't look, and they need our help to keep an eye out for them on the streets so that we're not, we're not responsible for an injury that we would never want to have on our conscience. So just kind of keep an eye out for the kids out there.
Which wouldn't.
I also wanted to thank all the volunteers who helped at the Criterion yesterday. It was a huge success, and it couldn't have happened without Wheat Ridge Twenty Twenty and their coordination of the volunteers who helped at the corners and the different booths and things like that. So thank you to all those volunteers. And I just also want to thank Wheat Ridge Police Department. I was not here last week when there was the incident with the escaped convict, but I was in a canyon at Lake Powell, and I got the reverse nine-one-one call. And I didn't get a lot of their calls, but that one came through. So thank you to the police department for their part in keeping the public safe. Thank you.
Okay, we're at the end. And, you know, I keep forgetting to mention, or I shouldn't say, but I forget, but the Criterion yesterday, the Kefel family, I really want to give a special thanks to them. They donated prizes. They donated time. They really were an essential part of it, all the generations. So thank you, Eugene, and Ron, and Megan, and I can't remember the name of the little boy, but it was just great to see everybody out there for that. So I think it's all time to say goodnight. June twenty, May twenty-five is Bike to Work Day? June, June twenty-five? Yeah, I don't want to be talking about May. And we have those council meetings on the first of the, June thirtieth.
So Mr. Starker and I just noticed there's one typo on the flyer. It says we're going west on Thirty-fifth. We're going east on Thirty-fifth to Fenton, so we'll have to get.
East or west, you're going to go.
Yeah, be there at ten, about nine thirty to ten for staging, but we're going east to the park.
Okay.
We'll get these fixed.
I believe it's time to close the meeting. Meeting's adjourned.